Mr. Batson.
Here.
Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
Miss Lang, Ms. Lankowski. That's affirmative of Mr. Schulman.
Here.
And Mr. Cantor, I don't see anybody else.
Awesome. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. A bunch of these, I think, are going to go pretty quickly at the beginning. So I think we can keep them pretty tight. So we're not here all evening. But with that, first one is twenty twenty four there sixty nine eight twenty four referral for twenty five Pogeney Street. And I think Mr. Lowe is on from the city to talk about this one. Do I have that right, Brian?
Yeah.
Hey, Happy.
The evening. Happy New Year. Um, very quickly, um, this is part of the photo farm, photo farm property. The city acquired property back in the nineteen nineties. Uh, original, the property owner was who had developed the property for thirty two units of single family homes. At the same time, the city was considering building a new Brooks High School at the time. So the city went out and actually went to state money is eleven acres. Let's say when I get state money to purchase about nine acres for open space. Uh, we did that, but eventually we bought the property and the city decided not to build a new Brooks High School on the property. Uh, there was three houses on the property. One, we renovated for continue city use. The other two were sold. Uh, although those the building are not historic building, the city at the time was very concerned about protecting the architecture. Uh, why those two buildings? Uh, those buildings are vacant. In fact, they were very, very, very deteriorated. Uh, one of them, the one twenty five Poggin Street actually has a wildlife living in it. Uh, and the other one was so bad that actually I fell through the floor and my leg was dangling into the, into the ceiling of the first floor. So they were very poor shape. And so the city's interest at the time selling this property was maintain them. We didn't want somebody to buy them, flip them. So that's one, one, one sensitivity that we have. And also, we gave them some historic conditions that they will go for a start commission for approval when they do renovation. Um, with both buildings, uh, well, specifically for the twenty five Poggin Street. Uh, what's his name? Geez, I've even forgot his name. Um, anyway, the property is sold. And for all these years, for almost twenty years now, I guess. Duck, duck people, especially. Duck people actually own the building and renovated it. And the way the building configure, uh, Brian, would you be able to put up the site plan for me if you could? Um, so what happens is that the building is situated in one side of the property, and there's really no open areas. So what, what, what he's looking to do is actually swap with the, with the city at this point. So that, um, if you, Brian, if you could put the Chris on, I think the building is right there in the middle, and the, his property is actually to the right of the building. Uh, that area is all wooded. Uh, he would like to swap with the city on the other side where there's a little bit open so that he doesn't have to cut down the tree to have a little bit of open space to use. And we went through a public hearing by the land use and building management committee and, and, uh, the committee actually uh, was supportive of this idea. There's no really, uh, really just same type of space. It's just exchanging square footage. And the committee felt that since it's a property owner, a local person that bought the property for the last twenty years and did what he's supposed to do when we sold them the property. Uh, the committee was, were supportive of it, uh, so that, you know, saving money from cutting down tree as well as we didn't want them, we don't, there's no need to cut down a tree, we'll swap the property. Uh, so this, uh, so tonight I'm requesting, uh, his plan and Sony commission review and approval for this proposed land swap.
Thank you, Alan. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Alan?
Alan, um, with the land swap, uh, is, uh, the new piece of property, uh, a buildable lot?
It's the same size the one that he has now. So, uh, it's a, it's a very typical sized lot. I don't know what exactly, I think it's maybe here, but no, it's not, it's not, I don't believe it's divisible.
Okay, thank you.
So in the picture that we're looking at, the blank square sort of on the right is like covered in trees. And the place where it says revised lot format is like no trees. But he owns the tree square. And he wants to own the no tree square. And then the city would owe the tree square.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
With that, also, I'd like to note that Commissioner Wells has also joined in, and Commissioner Jordan Byron as well. Um, and at this point, everyone's also seated. Um, with that, any other questions? If not, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
All second, Tammy.
How many seconds? Can we do a quick roll?
Certainly. Ms. Sebastianic?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Um, I'm going to stay.
Ms. Wells?
I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Right, that's approved.
With that, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan, and Happy New Year again. Oh, also, no. Oh, you're on the next item as well? Oh, awesome. Uh, so twenty twenty four seventy special appropriations, ninety eight South Main Street, uh, again, over to Alan. And also just note that Commissioner Williams has joined us as well.
Um, maybe I should go very briefly. Um, uh, ninety South Main Street, which is the old South North Community Center. Uh, most of you are aware of the building. Uh, the city uh, had always had partial ownership, excuse me, of the property, uh, back about two, two thousand fourteen or so. Uh, with Neon's departure, the city acquired the other half of the ownership of the property. But since then, um, the city went RP in the public to see whether we can develop the facility for a community center. Uh, um, use. And there was a initial discussion and relationship with YMCA. There's no contract executed or anything. We've been negotiating with them for the development of the building, renovation and development of the building, um, during COVID. And, and when, when the YMCA prepared construction drawings and get top cost estimates, the, the number came in very high to the point that they decided not to go forward with the project. But since then, the, the city decided that we were taking on that responsibility on our own. And, uh, working with Robert Solar from Recreation Pops, uh, we developed a, a, a plan uh, to renovate the existing building and build a gym to the backs of the building. Uh, I, I believe the plan is only commission has seen those, uh, concept before, the idea, as well as, uh, because we actually went for capital budget appropriation. Um, this project is currently funded as a multiple funding source. We have upper money of about six million dollars, which have, uh, which has a, um, funding commitment deadline of a past month, December two thousand twenty four, uh, to, to kind of commit the money for this project. So there's six point seven million dollars for that. Um, there's two million dollar worth of HUD money, federal dollars. There's a one point two million dollar worth of DECD, state of Connecticut, DECD funds in this. Uh, and also, we had put in about one point five million dollars of the, uh, the more money, we call it more money, GGP money, when we, uh, when the mall was, um, constructed, the city received some funding, we're using about one point five million dollar debt for this project. And I think, uh, recently, early this year, last year, we actually, the city actually go through capital budget, I believe we allocated, I believe it's two point five million dollars for this. Um, so we went through the whole design process and, and we went up to bid back in, uh, November of last year, a couple of months, few months ago. And because the current construction market for, uh, for institutional building, it's very, very uh, competitive. Well, actually, it's not competitive. It's very, um, it's the, the, the industry is very busy and, and the, um, the pricing are not very, uh, favorable. It's a, it's really a contractors market kind of thing. Uh, the, the project came in much higher than our budget and, uh, estimates. And when we go through the evaluation, it was, I think it's about three point seven million that over our budget. And we actually went through a value engineering process. We found another one point one million dollars of, uh, value engineering savings. So to reduce the overage. And at this point, uh, we, the city would like to proceed with this project, knowing that we are short about two point five million, two point two, two point four five million dollars. Uh, we are requesting a special appropriation that amount so that we can proceed with the projects. Again, there's like six million dollars. This is actually kind of upper funding, and that money has to be committed to this project. So we don't want to lose it. Uh, we actually, the common council recently in December has approved a partial GMP. A GMP means a guaranteed maximum price. So we actually signed a contract with the contractor for a portion of this, uh, um, project already. Uh, and we actually, we, we did, when we went through the value engineer, we reduced the cost and on, um, on two days ago, on Mon, on Monday night, went to BOR, uh, I'm sorry, BOR, uh, BET, BOR, BOR of Texas, uh, but but, but taxation, uh, for the special appropriation. Last night, we went to land use and building management committee or council. Uh, they approved the second part of the guarantee maximum price, which is a final number. And tonight, we're coming to the plan, so the commission to continue the special appropriation process for the two point five million dollars. Uh, coincidence, coincidentally, uh, we, uh, we finished the Cranberry School project recently. Uh, we have some residual fund that project. So we're going to use that money to, um, balance this, this additional capital budget request in order to maintain the city's overall financial status.
Thank you. So it's, it's a, it's a clean swap. In other words, like, no, no additional funding is needed.
Yes, but it's not additional debt for the city. It's, uh, it's previous approved money. So we, we are trying to find a balance in this so that don't increase additional burden on the city, financial burden.
Alan, who is going to manage, uh, the facility?
Uh, Robert is. Uh, that's the reason why we, uh, he's joining us tonight. Uh, if you have any question about the programming side, operating side, Robert would be able to answer those question for you.
Well, but just a quick question. Robert, have, uh, you placed, um, uh, operating funds in, um, your budget for the coming year? To cover the of operating?
This, the, this, um, particular, um, uh, um, facility won't open until probably the spring of, um, uh, twenty twenty six. Um, but we do have, um, we have a manager, um, that will actually manage the facility in our current budget. We will use a lot of our own, uh, current staff as, as the programs and as the facility builds, um, a more, uh, of audience and more programs. Um, it's, it's our hope that in, in the future that we can add, um, additional professional recreation staff. Um, the facility will also have three meeting rooms, um, community rooms for, um, uh, for rentals, for nonprofit agencies, don't have places to meet now, uh, for birthday parties, for, um, anniversaries, for whatever reason, uh, people want to rent. So we are also estimating a revenue from that each year. But, um, and we have, um, we, we budgeted part-time money and, and professional service money for instructors because uh, a lot of our programs will be run through by instructors that we will contract with. Uh, but, but we, we are hoping the future that it builds, uh, it's going to be a, a, a great facility. It has a lot of, uh, you know, uh, different, uh, assets to it. You know, we're talking about a workout room. We're talking about, um, arts and crafts. We're talking about a, you know, a, a program where, um, uh, they can record and, um, and they can learn music. Um, there, um, the YMCA is going to be running a, a STEM, a STEM program there. And they're also going to be running an esports program there. We're going to have a, a high school sized gym, um, uh, plenty of programs for, um, um, adults in, in, in families in the morning, uh, sessions, um, toddler gyms. Uh, you know, parents can bring their kids and, and they can work out and have a yoga instruction, dance classes. It's gonna be, it's gonna be enough for everyone to, to come and enjoy. But for the meantime, we're not going to have sufficient monies to hire all full-time staff, but we will have money to hire instructors and we will rotate our current staff, which we, um, have right now. Uh, we've added on two new, um, um, staff since I've been here in terms of programming. We've added on this, uh, uh, in recreation supervisor, and we've added on the sports program manager and, uh, somebody that, um, we have about, um, about fifteen of part-time, um, um, program people that work in the field with these people. So we will be rotating all those people in and out. But in the future, we will be, as we grow, we will be adding professional staff there because one of the things we want to do is, um, and we striving to do, the goal is to also have a, a Friday and Saturday night, late night program where we interact with the police and we coordinate with the police department to have at-risk youth group, keep, keep some of youth off the street through programming and, and sports. So, uh, it's going to be a full service, uh, program. Um, so I think, yeah, we, we're going to have to grow into it though.
Thank you.
And I see your hand up.
Yeah, hi. Um, I had two, I think, questions. Um, you just mentioned the recording studio. I see that removal of the recording studio equipment and reducing the AV in general is part of the way that, um, the engineering firm cut the cost. Is there still going to be a recording studio that's, that's usable based on these changes?
Yeah, a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of the things that were, um, considered, um, I guess, um, you know, tied into the building, a lot of the things we can buy. Uh, a lot of, there was a lot of, um, I won't say fluff, but there was, there was a lot of things that, like, like camera equipment, um, um, uh, these are flat screen TVs, most of the AV stuff. So a lot of this, we, we will be picking up in our capital budget, um, in our operations budget. Um, also, there's still money for, um, FM means. So I think, I don't know how much Alan has left in there.
It's, uh, yeah, let me just, sorry to interrupt you. Um, let me just help you answer the question. We found that the bits for the AV package is extremely high, uh, and, and I think they were, the way they priced this, because there wasn't a competition for AV equipment. I think they're overpricing it. That's one of the reasons we took it out. Uh, we are, we are still having uh, FN, FNU, which is furniture, equipment and fixture. Um, we have about sixty three hundred and sixty thousand dollars still in the budget to buy furniture and equipment. Uh, we also maintaining a contingency total about including owner contingency and CM, construction manager contingency is total about five percent. So, uh, we're looking at, as we go move forward with the project, and then in the event that we have, uh, contingency amount available, we may buy these equipment directly. Instead of going for a contractor with a markup and multiple level of markup and, and also I think, go ahead.
So there's still going to be a recording studio. It's just not being paid for by the engineers and the architects and all that. Okay. Um, I know I said I had two questions, but now I have three. It also says that you're removing the kitchen and turning it into a regular room. Um, is there a plan to bring the kitchen back or still be able to offer cooking classes?
There's two kitchens in the, in, in, in this project. One is the teaching kitchen on the second floor. The other one is the next to the community room. The kitchens are being built as a full kitchen in terms of infrastructure, plumbing and electrical and all that stuff. Only thing we did not include is actually is the kitchen equipment. Similarly, because, uh, people, we do not have a lot, we don't have bits really for, for kitchen equipment. And again, those equipment we can buy directly and avoid all the markup and stuff. So that's the reason we took it out and we look to buy these stuff as later on in the project directly from, from, from.
So you do still plan to have a teaching kitchen? You will be able to teach cooking classes? Okay. Uh, so my original second question. So you're asking for an extra two and a half million. But it'll actually come out of the original Cranberry School budget. Could that two and a half million from the Cranberry School have been used for other capital appropriations under the Board of Ed or the schools?
Um, I'm not sure I'm going to say this correctly, so pardon me if I don't, um. The way capital budgets works is that when we allocate money for a project, it doesn't mean that it go to, whether it's go to the POPS department or DPW. When the project is over, uh, the money we revert back to the city. Uh, so it's up to the city to see how, where, where the money goes to, whether you want to fund another project or it just reduces the city's overall debt. So just because of approval Cranberry School doesn't mean, or, or another product, or DPW, or, or with five department, it doesn't necessarily, that, that department does not have jurisdiction over the money, whatever's left. So it really is the city's decision after that.
Yeah. But could it have gone to the schools?
It could go anywhere.
Okay.
It's, it's the city's decision.
Thank you.
Uh, Richard?
Yes, I just wondered, Alan, at the end of the day, who's, who's going to end up owning this building?
We currently own the building and we will continue to own this building.
Totally.
Totally.
The, the city will have total ownership of it.
Yes. Uh, when, 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 when the city, uh, again, when Neon, uh, moved on back, back a number of years ago, uh, we had always under the deep, we have half ownership of the building. So as part of the, I think the GGP money, one point five million dollars, we spent three hundred something thousand dollars, roughly about three hundred thousand dollars to, uh, to, to secure the rest of the, uh, the fifty percent share of the building thereafter. So we are, we are total ownership of the building right now.
No, I just remember the ending on that was kind of a nightmare. So.
It was.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like Commissioner Langgallis has a question?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, um, when the building is fully finished, how many people can use the facility at once approximately?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure this is the right word, but it's a lot. The gym is a full-size gym for, uh, the standard is really a high school standard. So you just think, it's not like, you know, it doesn't have, have about bleacher that fits around, I would say around seventy five to eighty people. Uh, but same time at that gym, it's, uh, you can count, it's probably two, three hundred people. You can actually fit in there for, for, for event. The same time typically is, uh, two teams. The building is twenty two thousand square feet. Uh, so it's a substantial building and there's a community, there's one major community room and smaller community. I think it's two more community room that could be used. So, um, I mean, we never calculated the total capacity, uh, um, of the building, but, uh, you know, it's, could be a few hundred people if it, it, that's what happens.
And once, if, if this money is approved, would you go back to any of these contractors again to see if you can find any more savings? I, I mean, I get that things cost a lot more than they used to, but can you find any more savings?
I think we've done a lot to get to this point. Um, the value engineering savings that we find is originally, we were trying to info about one point three million dollars worth of saving. Uh, we actually gone to the contractor, the trade contractor, to look at the construction methods and more than just like, you know, eliminating, um, but eliminate, taking, taking out some of the kitchen equipment so that we don't buy it from them. But more than that too, we actually look at how things are put together and whether we need certain things. And so there are changes made and, and working with the contractor, different contractor, different trade contractor, we identify how to do things to make, so that we can save some money. So that step has been taken. So as, as we, as we move forward, the ability to find more saving is very, very limited because we've done that work already.
Okay, thank you. I know, I mean, part of the building already exists. It seems so amazing that you have to spend thirteen million dollars to renovate and do an addition. But I guess it is what it is. I trust you, Alan, to do.
It's a, it's a total redo of the building now. It's like, it's like basically, um, doing the whole building over. Because the whole, the, the whole building will be, um, it's, it's totally different. The whole inside will be almost new. Um, and, you know, I, I come from a city where there's thirty seven recreation, um, centers. And this, this price, and I brought this up last, last night. It, it seems like a lot, but believe me, for, uh, a, a building that's going to be uh, twenty two thousand plus another ten thousand square feet, thirty two thousand square feet. Um, this is, I, I think it's a reasonable cost.
That's great. I hope a lot of people are able to use it and enjoy it.
Yeah. Not to prolong the conversation, just want to let you know that, uh, subject to this planning, it's only commission review and recommendation tonight, it's going to go to the finance committee tomorrow night. Uh, and then next Tuesday, the, uh, this special appropriation will be going to common council together with the final contract approval on next Tuesday, like next Tuesday night. Uh, day after the contract is going to start construction, probably the middle of, uh, middle of February, the first week, that's when we're going to start interior demolition and stuff like that. It's going to take us about a year to build. So about, uh, by the same time next year, it'll be finished.
Awesome. Uh, with that, any other questions? Not seeing any. Do I have any, uh, motion?
Quick question. Um, somebody in the audience has their hand up. We can't take comments or questions from the audience right now, right?
Correct.
Didn't want that person.
I'm missing me for the public.
Okay, great.
Do we have?
I'll, I'll move approval of, uh, the transfer of the funds.
Blue motion. So I have a second?
I'll second.
Richard, seconds, can we do, uh, Steve or Brian, could we do a quick roll call?
Let me do, Steve?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Sebastianic?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski? And Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
And y'all, as always. Next up, we have twenty twenty four seventy one, another eight twenty four referral for City of Norwalk for twenty four Monroe Street. I think we have Brian here.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Over to you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, thanks for your time tonight. Um, so just a little bit of a background, the parking authority, we manage the South Norwalk train station and, um, previously, we had a company called Lobster Craft in a, uh, in one of our lease spaces that, uh, ended their lease in, in, uh, over the summer. And now we have an opportunity to lease this space to a company called Sono Brewing Company. And going through the process of getting this lease from a municipal building, this is the, uh, this would be the next step on approving the parking authority to get into a lease agreement with Sono Brewing Company. They're, uh, just a little history or just a little background on Sono Brew Company. Um, they're a craft brewery known for its innovative and flavorful beers, coffees, teas and craft food. Uh, the brewery captures the essence of the local culture, offering a diverse range of brews and cater to various tastes. With a welcoming atmosphere and a, uh, commitment to quality, Sono Brew Company has become a popular spot for both locals and visitors to enjoy unique handcrafted beverages, food options and engage in lively community spirit. Um, they're looking to lease this space, provide a grab and go service to the neighborhood and commuters. They also plan to leverage delivery services such as DoorDash, Grubhub and Uber Eats.
Great. It seems an exciting, um, tenant for the spot.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, I think it's a good fit. I think it's a great thing for the, uh, for the station and the surrounding, uh, neighborhood.
Yeah. Uh, with that, are, do anyone have any questions here?
Uh, Brian, uh, uh, I'm, I'm supportive of this use. Uh, and maybe it's my failing memory, uh, but I just don't recall, uh, that the parking authority has ever come before us before, uh, with leases.
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I've been in this role for a little bit over a year. Um, I think this could be the first time that we've had to go through this process, but it is a state statute that does require uh, any, any building owned by a city, uh, to go in front of the land use committee first and get a, uh, a, uh, a public hearing and then go to the PNZ commission, like tonight for a referral for the, uh, for the lease option that we're looking to do.
It happened a couple of different times, Mr. Schulman.
It might.
I've simply forgotten.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Yeah, apologies for my lack of, uh, knowledge on the history.
Yeah, apologies for my lack of uh knowledge on the history of that.
Uh, anyone have any questions? Further questions? No? With that, do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Lou makes the motion. Anna, do second. Anna, seconds. With that, can we do a quick uh vote, Brian?
Uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski? And Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Right, that is unanimous.
Unanimous approval or to catch and drink with them there in the near future.
Yeah, thank you and apologies. I I forgot to tell tell everybody my title. It's Assistant Director of Parking for the uh City of Norwalk. So thank you and you know, we look forward to seeing you when uh they get open. It'll be great to see everybody.
Thanks, Brian. Have a good evening.
Thank you, too.
Uh, next up is uh five twenty S P two oh four Flax Hill. I believe Attorney Blank is on for, so this is for an extension of time. Happy New Year, Attorney Blank, and over to you.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Uh, yeah, so this is just a a one-year extension of time and a special permit. Uh, was approved back in twenty twenty. Um, it's it was to renovate a historic structure and add uh fourteen um fourteen additional units, so it'd be forty-six units on the onsite. Um, we've asked for a one-year extension to to February first of uh next year. We have re-engaged the um architect and um engineer. Uh, and we actually have a traffic report uh to modify the the development under the new regulations. And we are anticipating in the next month or two coming back to you um with a a modified proposal. If that modified proposal meets your approval and is approved, then we would let this one ultimately lapse uh next year. If the modified approval, modified application doesn't meet your approval and is denied, then we would um move forward, uh, or I would anticipate they'll move forward with uh this approval. So we're asking for the one-year extension really as a safety net, but we ultimately hope to construct something slightly different, not entirely different, but slightly different that will be back shortly for.
Awesome. Uh, do his folks have any questions here? No, uh, Dana? Oh, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Oh, now we can.
No.
Oh, now we we heard the no.
Dana, maybe email me tomorrow and I can see if we can set up a time for particular audio issues.
Maybe she could just text somebody her question.
I'll text it to Brian.
We heard that. We lost you.
Now we don't. Text it to Brian. That's a good idea.
We'll wait for you. I'll have cue some waiting music here.
Um, good evening, everyone. I'm getting ready to sign off while I drive home, but I'll pick it up when I get in.
Okay, JJ, thank you for that.
You're safe. All right, I'll I'll sign back on about a half hour. Bye-bye.
Nick, while we're waiting, why don't we simply uh ask if there are other questions?
I assume people would have popped any other questions. Folks have any other questions? Yeah, this seems straightforward. Attorney Blank, give any jokes you want.
No, but I could I can tell you that uh we've got a whole lot of applications coming this year, so uh be ready.
Dun dun dun. Brian, do you have it? It looks like you're.
Yeah, hold on one second. So Dana asks. Uh, does the renovation include any restoration of the exterior of the historic building?
Yes, the the approved plans did call for a restoration of the historic building and and uh my recollection was there is a uh fairly ugly fire escape uh on the exterior of the building that was gonna that would be removed as part of the renovations. And in the in the proposed, not part of the approval, but a part of the the new application is we would expect that we'll be um looking to uh refurbish the the deck that wraps the the building as well as other improvements to the existing historic structure, the carriage house.
Brian, could you, I I was, well, I was, while we were waiting, I was almost gonna ask, can you pull up the um current in the, you have access to that quick, the current and the proposed? Just this, maybe the street view and then the elevation that was in there.
And Steve, maybe while Brian's doing that, you can tell us commissioners, because with this new agenda and format, we usually can see everything, but it, I think it might depend on the age of the computer that you're using, whether you get logged over to the city webpage with those files.
Are you talking about the application materials or the agenda items?
Yeah, because this particular application in the in the whatever you call it, the link that you sent us. It's a different, it's a different format. And then when you click on the little link that says decision letter and I open it on my older computer, it's not there.
Hmm.
On my newer computer, it works.
Okay, if if that continues to happen, we'll probably send a separate note out pointing you to the website, our page as well, that has the application materials, so that would be there as a backup.
Right. I mean, and I do know how to do that, obviously, but other people, you know, might not be, I think that was JJ's complication earlier today that she mentioned.
And Brian, I think the next page has the color picture if you if you care.
So yeah, so basically it's putting the if you could, the it's putting like the the peaked roof back on, fixing the wraparound porch. I think they have to bury the utilities as part of that, and I think as as Attorney Blank mentioned, the fire escape was coming off.
Attorney Blank, is that the building in the front on Flax Hill or is the one in the back?
Yeah, that's the building in the front.
Okay, and I hope there's gonna be some more landscaping, because it's sort of dreary. There's one little evergreen tree.
And I think uh there will be more landscaping and 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 we're, as as long as we meet and we're pretty certain that we'll we meet, because there are parking requirements in this zone. Um, the the new parking requirements, there's this what I perceive as a fairly ugly nub of a few spaces of parking, like dead smack in the front of the building. That we'll remove as part of the um the the new application that you'll see, you know, in the next month or two.
Great, thank you.
Great. Uh, with that, do I have a motion? Galen, motions to approve, Richard seconds. With that, can we just do a quick vote, Brian or Steve?
Sure. Um, do Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Miss Tabashnik?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes, that was me.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski? And Mr. Cantor?
Yes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Attorney Blank, and have a great. Uh, next up is one dash eighteen SPR and three dash twenty SPR Stone Realty Associates, fifteen Oakwood Ave and twenty-seven Sarah Hill Road. Believe we have Attorney Sachi on for that. Uh, Happy New Year, Attorney Sachi, and over to you.
Happy New Year, Mr. Cantor, members of the commission on this chilly January night. Uh, thank you for your time this evening. For the record, Liz Sachi, I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Anac and Hennessy, and I've represented Stone Realty Associates over the years. For those of you who weren't on the board in twenty eighteen, uh, this request relates to the twenty eighteen approval of what is affectionately known as the House on the Hill, the Innovation Center for the HMTX International Headquarters uh in twenty twenty, then there was also an application to create a uh adjacent parking lot to serve the needs of uh Stone Realty Associates in this building. As part of the original approval, site plan approval in twenty eighteen, uh, there is a request by my client to waive fifty percent of the required parking spaces for the building. Building's twenty-one thousand square feet, fifty-nine parking spaces needed for the office and three residential apartments. Uh, your predecessor commission members granted the waiver, but as part of that grant, they were, my client was required to post a bond in the amount of four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, which represented twenty-nine parking spaces times fifteen thousand parking space. And that was posted in the event that two years later, if it if the circumstances uh revealed that parking was needed, that those funds would be used in by the client to create a parking deck. As part of your uh this commission's approval, various conditions of approval required that in addition to the two-year time period that the bond be held, we also provide to you a traffic report and a parking study to demonstrate that our position on the the unnecessary of all of the parking spaces was validated. That uh analysis was provided. Um, it revealed that about thirty percent of the spaces are occupied during the typical weekday and on uh specific event days which are from time occur from time to time, about sixty percent of the parking spaces are occupied. So we don't believe that the entirety of the parking is necessary, the fifty-nine spaces as originally required. Uh, certainly certainly uh the number of spaces that exist are appropriate and sufficient. I don't believe there have been any um comments or concerns or questions raised about problems with parking on the site. None have been shared with me. So at this point, we request that the two years has passed, we ask that the bond be released.
Great, thank you for that. Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
Yes. What would have happened? If this isn't, I don't know who this is for, maybe Steve. What would have happened if the traffic study showed that in fact parking situation was bad and they should have had uh the one hundred percent spaces at this point, would they be able to? Would they just change the parking lot and create more spaces like? This whole thing where, like, how does this work?
I could, I can answer that. We would have been required to construct a parking deck atop of the existing, the spaces that exist right now.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, so on the, yeah, and not to belabor, but just on the original plan submitted, they showed a hypothetical parking deck that they could build, should they need to build, but just felt that they probably wouldn't, wouldn't need to build.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a comment, not a question.
Correct.
Um, when um this building was opened, I was invited to tour it uh on the day of the opening. Um, it's a very special building. It uh basically is a hundred percent self-sustaining. Uh, doesn't um uh typically need to draw any uh power from any other source. Um, I think that the building might be of great interest to the members of the commission uh as a way of um visualizing um in, you know, real time. Um, a building like this, it is, to the best of my knowledge, the only one in Norwalk. And uh so my question was, Liz, if the commission members uh were interested in a a tour, would it be appropriate?
Commissioner Schulman, absolutely. If any commissioner would like to tour the building, I can certainly um put that person in contact with the Director of Community Affairs or make the arrangements myself, but um Harlan Stone, the owner of HMTX and Stone Realty Associates, would be delighted for anyone to come through, see what happens, see what the building's all about, how it functions, and also what takes place inside. So the answer is unequivocally yes.
Really appreciate that, Liz. Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Tammy motions, Darius seconds. Could we do a quick vote?
Sure, um, Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski? And Mr. Schulman, yes. Oops, sorry, and Mr. Cantor.
Oh, yes. Fantastic. Uh, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I think Liz, you're on for the next one as well, right? Do I have that right? Twenty twenty-three, eight twenty-four, Van Zant?
Yes, sir, I am.
Awesome.
This is a request for a one-year extension of time. Uh, as you, as some of you may recall, my client, twenty-four Van Zant Street, appeared before you in January of last year for a motor vehicle special permit and CAM application to operate a motor vehicle repair facility at twenty-four Van Zant. We have recorded the certificate of um special permit, the Mylar of the approved uh site plan. And we've secured a zoning permit. We're in the midst of working through additional questions that the building department has before it will start the process for building permit. But we're right up against the deadline to secure that building permit. So if you would see it in your wisdom to grant us a one-year extension of time, I'm fairly confident the building permit will be issued relatively soon, but we want to protect the underlying approval, hence the request for extension of time.
Thank you for that. Seems pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, do you have a motion? Richard, approve uh motions to approve. Do you have a second? Lou's hand was first. Sorry, Tammy. Um, with that, can we just do a quick uh quick vote?
Uh, certainly I can do, start with Ms. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski? Yes, and Mr. Cantor.
Yes. With that unanimous. Thank you.
Everyone have a pleasant evening.
You as well. With that, we're moving on to uh twenty twenty-four sixty-eight SPR Matthew and Elizabeth Malucci. Apologize if I mispronounced that. One twenty-eight Perry Ave. This is for a site plan review for uh an ADU on an existing detached dwelling unit. So uh, Mr. Malucci, over to you quickly. So just quick presentation from you and then we'll go to questions if anyone has.
Sure, thank you. Um. Yes, we uh we, my family lives at one twenty-eight Perry Avenue. We have a existing structure uh on our property. Um, we've been here for a couple of decades living in this home, and we want to uh ask the commission to approve it as an ADU. Uh, we've submitted architectural plans, surveyor plans. Uh, I believe we meet the requirements and um we're asking for you all to approve it.
Do you mind bringing up uh the site plan or Brian, maybe if we want to bring that up and see if, I don't know if anyone has any questions for the applicant here? Seems like an exciting reuse of something you already have, which is exciting.
Yes, thank you.
What? What's it currently being used for? What was it originally, like a garage or what?
There, you know, there is a part of the garage there, but it was just being used by our family, um, a lot for storage, sometimes for dwelling ourselves within the family. We have a couple of kids out of our house now and uh we just have extra room.
Uh, do folks have any other questions?
Yep, Mr. Malucci, hi. Uh, how does the size compare to your primary dwelling?
Um, it's approximately half the size, I'd say. Maybe a little more.
All right, thank you. It's just one bedroom upstairs.
Correct, yeah.
And do they share the same driveway as you?
Yes, they do. We have a, we have a long driveway with a lot of space up in top and bottom of it. So there should be no issues around parking.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, this was one where the, really the difficulty was that square footage cap, right? That's fair, yeah.
Yeah.
But since it's an existing structure, then
right, that kind of precludes that, right?
No, no, so we still, if you're doing a detached, even if it's existing structure, the seven hundred still applies. So so Matt had to do a little uh creativeness here to Uh, creativeness here to kind of section off portion of the structure to be the, what's considered the A D U.
If the seven hundred limit wasn't there, do you think he would have? Made this a two bedroom or what would be your ideal use of this building?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I certainly would like to use as much of it as possible. Um, you know, we've, we've portioned it off in order to meet the city's requirements, but. It, it certainly could be a two bedroom if we wanted it to be.
So that storage area in the top right there, could that have been a bedroom?
It could have absolutely been a bedroom, yes. That would have been an ideal space for an additional bedroom.
Something for us to think about.
Yeah.
Is that storage space heated currently?
Yes, it is.
Was it a bedroom before?
It was, it, you know, it was being used as a, as a space for, you know, just living, but it easily could have been a bedroom and probably was designed as that initially.
Thank you.
With that, are there any further questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion for approval and then Brian can bring up the resolution, Anna, motions to approve, do you have a second? Tammy? Seems to meet all the site plan requirements. Then Tammy, to your point on the second uh item here deals with the, the sizing to separate that storage out. Folks have any comments or edits they would like here? Seeing none.
Perhaps, I mean, just a question maybe for Steve, if. If the planning and zoning re-looks at the size of the A D Us. And let's say we increase the square footage, and I don't know what the square footage of that space is. Would the applicant then have to come back if he wanted to turn it into a bedroom or could he just go ahead and do it?
Uh, I think it just, if, if the wording of the language is that that space has to be used for. Storage, he'd have to probably come back and modify that. Um, it should be a pretty simple. You know, there's not, I wouldn't say there's a fee involved, it's probably just writing a letter. Enclosing the plans with the letter, seeking to modify that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, with that, I think Steve or Brian, we can do a quick uh roll call.
Yeah. All right, I'll, I'll do, uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Sebastianic?
Yes.
Ms. Langgalls?
Yes.
Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski? And Mr. Cantor.
Yes, this is a great spot for an A D U, thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Have a great evening.
Have a great night. Bye bye.
Okay, with that, we are moving to our public hearing, two thousand and twenty-four, thirty-two S P Angelo Valitone. Apologize if I mispronounced the name there, five Blackberry Lane. Um, just to remind everyone and also for those at home. The order of the public hearing, the applicant will give her short presentation throughout its staff, um. The commissioners or staff can ask questions. After the applicant has completed their presentation, we'll turn it over to a public to have, to ask your questions. Uh, at the end of all the questions is then the applicant would have the opportunity to reply. Uh, I'm not sure if we get to that piece of the puzzle tonight, but we'll see where we are. Uh, with that, and we'll obviously give everyone instructions on how to. Access the Zoom and put your hand up and whatnot. So with that, turn it over to uh the applicant to kick off the presentation.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Um, hi, my name is Aries and this is my wife Angela Ballinton. We live um in number five Blackberry Lane and we are here to seek a, a special permit. Which is uh, under a classification of the C D one M zone. Uh, we believe and we envision that we can provide the highest possible uh group home in our community, which is uh. In assisting both elderly and disabled uh residents, that uh we believe we can provide a safe and a better place for them. I know everybody up here have a lot of questions regarding how will the, the value of my property gonna work? Uh, is there any, gonna be a traffic involved? Uh, um, basically, uh, some of our neighbors is asking about is whether gonna be this one, gonna be a commercial thing, but uh. Definition itself, it says a residential group home or rest, we, sometimes they call it a rest home, so, um. We are also being approved by the Commissioner of um, the Department of Social Service, Andrea Burton Reeves. And they believe and we were approved that uh we are um qualified to do this uh group home in this uh. Existing uh residence address. And I know um, most of our uh neighbors are gonna be afraid of those speculation about. Uh, what can happen to our community. We honor and respect uh everybody in our community. I know uh, these are questions that we need to answer for tonight. Um, uh, but rest assured, um, the resident that we're getting is uh, we don't accept any behavioral or psych problem. Uh, any addiction uh problem or any criminal uh records, I mean, um. By the way, my background, we are both registered nurses, we've been in the healthcare industry for more than fifteen years. I myself, I'm also a physical therapist, so we um been in this industry and we saw the needs. When we visit the nursing home, we visit a assisted living facility in the residential home and we saw the needs that uh. Most of the families that cannot afford to, to go to a certain uh facility like assisted living, you know how much they, they charge you to go there. So we saw the needs and our families requested that if we can able to keep, cater the needs for this and that's the calling. And that's what uh, the passion started to, to bring back all the communities without any discrimination. To the elderly and to the disabled uh people around us. I know um. Group home already been existed since nineteen eighty. We have currently thirteen uh group homes in Norwalk, fourteen in Stanford, in nine in Greenwich. And uh, the neighboring um, uh, people also uh speculate that, uh, how about the value of our property? Uh, we, we did a research with some of the um famous, I mean, uh, Cowboy Banker, E X P and uh William Ravis regarding uh. We as the senior agent Realtor specialist there with the, with the National Association Realtor that. There is not gonna be of, an any effect of the evaluation of any property because the. The factors of the home value depends on the supply and demand, the location and the property condition itself of your house. So those are the things that we, we speculate are. Um, if our neighbor also asks, why would I choose your group home rather than the existing um assisted living or nursing home that we are, we know? The famous um already existing within the, the, the community. Of course, um, what we are offering is just also an option of care. I know nursing home is good, if some people uh prefer or choose to go there, uh, they have the option. They have the preference to go there, but what we can offer is the, the ratio of uh, um, a twenty-four seven nursing care. Which is um, a ratio of one is to three, nursing home offers you. Uh, care of one is to forty, assisted living sometimes go to one is to five, I'm talking about the ratio of nurses to our residents. One is to forty, one is to fifteen, one is to thirty, and we are offering one is to three. So we're only catering for three residents, that's what um, Mr. Sean Duffy told us, that we are able. Uh, we can able to cater three uh residents for now because. Our septic system is only, only capable for that, so we, we, we agreed with that. That we can only cater three residents and uh some speculation of our neighbors, they also. Think that we're gonna do six or eight, no, we stick on the three patient alone itself. So hopefully, those are the things that uh, you, uh, answer your, your, your thoughts or your questions. And how about um, how we look, how, how we're gonna be, be maintaining this, uh, we are gonna be overseen. By the, the Department of State of Connecticut, so every year, they're gonna come to our plus, uh, their place, to our residents. If we are meeting the needs, if we are giving the, the good quality of care, so every year there's gonna be an inspection. Uh, um, that we can be meet, are, are we still meeting the quality of need or care for, providing for the three residents? So those are the things that we can uh tell you. And um, I know you have still a lot of questions to ask, but hopefully we can answer you those things uh tonight. And we can, we, um, my Angela and me, we can be the primary uh caregiver twenty-four seven because we are staying in the facility, in the, in the resident itself. So we can provide them uh twenty-four seven, we are both nurses, we're both qualified to do this one. Why, she, she has been a good, been a longtime supervisor in a nursing home, we know how to handle this thing and of course. Through the help of the, the state and everything, we have, we um follow all the requirements, the zoning. We also, the, the neighbors also um are being hesitant about how about the, the traffic? I mean, how about the, the parking? We hired um. The traffic engineers to do this one and they say it's gonna be very minimal, we submitted to uh. To the zoning and everything and we are set, we are qualified to, for this uh um residential group home. Um, so um. Other than that, I mean, um, the, the residential group home or the rest home are. I said, there's a lot of things that can uh, can uh, we talk about tonight and hopefully we can uh. We can answer that and we also asked um lawyers for this, uh, fair housing lawyers that uh. They say we, we cannot discriminate uh elders, especially the disabled people, to live in a nice community like ours. And we cannot prohibit those uh putting up residential care. I know we have a good community. We just want to bring back all the community, the, the, the passion, the skills that we have. And hopefully we can answer all the questions that you have.
At this point, do you have approval from the Department of Health?
No, um, we have approval from the Department of Social Service. After the zoning, uh, we will, uh, the next step will be the state. And um, yeah, and the, the final decision will be the state. Uh, they will give us a license if we, uh, we can uh, uh, operate the rest home. But um, residential care home or rest home is, is not a healthcare facility, it's by definition, healthcare facility is a place. For a hospital, clinic, or um any outpatient or specialist ca- uh care centers. Um, this is not also a nursing home, uh, a nursing home, they uh provides uh. They provide skilled nursing and long-term care with a medical condition, this is a group home that. Uh, we provide um, the daily, daily living and uh. Those who cannot safely live alone, so that's our, uh, that's our group home. And um, Ares mentioned about the parking and according to the zoning. Uh, uh, so, zoning requirement and estate requirement, it's uh. One parking space for three bedrooms and we met that um requirements. And uh, anymore, and there's some more that we have to uh clarify things, just like the ambulance. Now, our neighbors is uh concerned about the ambulance, you know, um, of course, emergency arises to group home. Just like to a regular home, they have emergencies, you know, and uh we have the right on people age to use nine one one. And um, it's just like uh any traditional home, you know, so anymore, yeah.
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 Steve, I saw your hand go up, I didn't know if you wanted to.
I, I think uh, Mr. Cantor, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you were asking from the Norwalk Health Department specifically related to the. Um, change needed for your septic system, I think that's what the question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, uh, Sean as, uh, did visit our place and then verbally, he um. He approved us for three residents and uh, we're just waiting for the revision of our um. Site plan and awaiting a paper from the state uh for uh. Um, for the final letter that uh, in case that we need to extend or in, uh, increase our septic. Uh, we have a, 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 a plan.
For that, yeah.
Yeah, for that.
So they did, yeah, they did practice soil testing and everything, the department are, are here and we, we pass everything with that.
The other commis, before we move over to the public hearing, part of this.
Mr. Ballinton, um, you've indicated you're both nurses, uh, are you registered nurses?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, we're registered nurses, we're, we came from a healthcare family and uh. You know, if uh, the neighbors is, you know. Uh, there's a question that arises that like, um, one if one gets sick, we know. And in our family, we have uh two doctors, we have two nurse practitioners, we have four registered nurse. And we have two nursing students in Norwalk Community College and I think, you know, that's uh enough that we can give. Care to our residents that, that really needs us, we know the needs and they, we were just given an option, we just want to give back. And care for um, that needs our care, that we are gifted of.
Uh, in addition to the uh, uh, three residents. Um, will there be um, any staff on duty overnight?
Yes, it's a twenty-four hour care, it's a twelve hour shift, we will be, as Sean said, from the Department of Health, that we can stay. At the, at the facility twenty-four hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anna, then we'll go to Galen.
Just wanna confirm the doctors and nurses that you just listed, those are not people working at this? House?
No.
No, no.
You're just talking about who's in your family?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, you know, medical people.
Yes.
Okay, um, are you, you guys are both nurses, are you guys gonna still be like fully employed as nurses? Wherever you are now while also working at the rest home or do you have to?
We are, we are right now in the profession of our, of the um hospice and home care, that's why we saw the needs and. We have the option to uh, to uh, to, to work with uh. Like uh, providing the care with the, with the research, residential care together with, maintaining our own. Work right now and it's not gonna be um, any problem with that.
Okay.
I have. Some questions? Um, I'm a little confused with that, with that answer, so let me, let me just clarify a couple of things. You started off by saying that you reside at five BlackBerry, so when you say that, that means that you live there and your family lives there?
Exactly.
Yes.
So. Who is the, who is the twenty-four hour caregivers going to be?
Will be the twenty-four hour caregivers.
Who's, who's that, you, you?
It's gonna be us.
Both of us, um.
But you're still gonna be maintaining full-time employment someplace else.
Yeah, because I only work a, a week from my full-time job. And she only works a week in a, in, in a full-time job.
So we can switch, yeah. For the meantime, yeah.
But I don't understand that answer.
No, we all, because our work, we work only in, in a month, we only work fourteen days. Ares work fourteen days, I work fourteen days, so we have, you know, if you have seven days a week. We have, we have fifteen days off. So we, yes, you got me, so we um, we alternate, we can alternate.
Okay, so my next question is, when this application first came uh before the commission. Um, I, I, I wanna say it was a month or six weeks ago. Um, I had asked you about your application to the commission for three. Um I had asked you about your application to the commission for three. Beds versus your application to the state of Connecticut for six. And I had pointed out to you. That the approval um talked to the financial viability. Of your facility based on six. So I am wondering, does the state in any of your filings, are they aware? That you are planning on not six, but just three?
Um, the Department of Social Service, um they they said it's up to six. But because we consulted a physical consultant from the state. And we are only um uh can cater three residents. And we have group homes that exist and operational with only two, three residents or four residents. And they're they're still operational at this time, even they have less patients.
But that doesn't have anything to do with your approvals, though.
No, yes, you're you're asking me how we can, you know, we survive with only three residents.
Well, I'm I'm not really asking you how you can survive it, because if you're going to live there, it's your home. What I'm asking you is, um the state has made a big deal over the last couple of years. And all the things I've seen in the newspaper and nursing homes closing and that kind of stuff. About investigating the financial viability of of these types of places. And the way I read your approval is that your math was done based on six beds, not three.
Yeah, it's just.
I asked you last time when you were here to make sure that you were going to have something from the state, at least for me.
Yeah.
Asked you for something from the state that would clarify that, and I didn't see it in your filings.
Yeah, the state will give us a word if uh if we need to add more. Um they will give us our recommendations if we need uh uh we need to make the changes inside the house. For structural changes, so we can cater more residents. But that.
Again, that's that's not what I'm asking you. You're asking for a permit for three people.
Yeah.
And there has been, as you know, uh some neighborhood concerns about how many people you really plan on having. And um hearing you, and it's sounding like you're saying to me that. You know, we we may uh change this operation up at a later date and put six people in.
Uh no, that that gonna happen, because um there are, the recommendation of the social services approve us up to six. And the thing is, during the process, um we didn't meet the requirements, especially on the the septic system alone. That's why uh we, the measurement of the house, and that that's that's the one that restricts us. I mean, for now, we are only capable of doing the the three resident for now. But we, well, uh it's not gonna be any possibility that we can, in 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 the time that you're saying. We might add three or four more. It's not gonna happen, because we are only capable of doing three residents.
Okay, so let let me say this a different way. Um I don't know what direction the commission is gonna go in. Uh but if this application is approved, um I will ask. That as a condition, that it be clearly indicated to the state of Connecticut. In both of your required administrative agencies, that there's gonna be a limitation of three beds.
Yes.
Are here.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm also going to ask, although I don't know whether the zoning uh department would be especially interested in this. Um that you um agree to give permission for inspections periodically. To determine how many.
Yeah.
Beds are there.
Of course, yeah.
Please don't interpret what I'm saying as that I'm gonna vote for you.
Yeah.
But if it comes this way, that's what I'm gonna ask for.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the state will, yeah, this.
Yeah, we were willing to undergo with that condition. I mean, if it's uh, we're gonna be happy with with that.
Okay, I have nothing else at this point, Mister Kanter.
Galen, I think you had your hand raised.
Oh, yes. Uh will will you have any employees? Or will you take care of the care yourself?
Yeah, um we are gonna be capable of doing uh one is to three uh resident. And we are uh really capable of doing that. So for now, me and my wife, we're gonna do it. As a regular primary caregiver.
Okay, and you'll be living on the on the on the premises?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Oh, please. So the idea that there's going to be traffic and parking difficulties is not really a big problem. Um. Okay, thank you. I have more deliveries than an ordinary household. Like when I came home today. And there was a UPS box truck blocking my driveway. That was delivering to me three packages. He was going by sidewalk to deliver the packages, and he was blocking my sidewalk, side uh my driveway. In the normal course of anybody living in the modern world, box trucks come with deliveries. Would, how many, would you have more deliveries than the normal family would have?
I don't, I don't think so, because um it's uh it's residential, you know, it's just like. In a home, you have a grandma, grandpa, you know, just add one mother in law, three. I don't, I don't think it will be uh all around. To see that there is a traffic that will create in our uh in our uh i- in our site, you know.
You're gonna have at least twice a week with box or something like that. It 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 would be occasionally, you'd need to order something that gets delivered, just like I. They get delivered and they get. Yes, box truck, right?
Yeah, we get most of the time the Amazon truck and everything. So it's, I think we can accommodate uh more than enough for that, for that space that you're saying.
Yeah.
So it's a whole house, it's you two are gonna be living there.
Yes.
That's gonna be living there. And those are the only people that are gonna be living there. So it's five people in this house, right?
Yeah.
That isn't probably more than your neighbors, many of your neighbors.
We don't know, but you know, it's their house, so yeah. Um.
Okay, you, in terms of visitors, um will you? How will you handle visitors to the residents?
Um visitors, they can visit during the day, but they need to, you know, they need to um. To uh call us, you know, for uh, you know, what they they can come, so we can make a plan for that.
Okay, so what's your experience with with visitors? Like, what my. We would visit like every other day?
Um, yeah, some of the residents, uh we've been through a group home. Uh sometimes they comes, you know, once a week, once a month, or twice a week, you know, it's it's not every day. Cause they know um that they trusted the caregiver, if they trusted the caregiver, so just give a call and how, you know, how their loved ones.
Yes, some of them, they're also out of state.
Out of state, yeah. So the family is out of state, out of the, you know, it's not near just the. The area, so they just call sometimes, or they can FaceTime, you know, with all the communication technology right now, we can do that.
Right, so you're not anticipating uh that there'll be many, many.
No.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Uh JJ had her hand up just before me, so I'll defer to her and go.
JJ, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Okay, well, actually, I'll be brief for two questions. Okay, so the first one is, I missed the introduction, I'm so sorry. But um what is the um cognitive ability of your um the people who you're caregiving for?
Yeah, so um, you know, based on the definition of the C E C for disability, you know, um. It could be uh one is impairment, uh the second one is activity limitations. Or particip- participation restrictions, but there is some disability that they define that. It costs um, you know, some that uh uh due to birth or. Like, you know, some Down syndrome or autistic or A D H D, but you know. Um yeah, that's what Ers told, that we will exclude those with a crim- criminal history and with a violent uh behaviors. We cannot, we don't have the license to do that, we are not trained for that. Um, you know, uh we know, well, you know, we cannot do that. There are other group homes that they do that. Uh you know, is is specific, as is elderly and the disabled that, you know, like. Uh it it will be assessed by the a nurse. We can uh, we can say, no, if, you know, we cannot uh take care of such condition, yeah. It will be uh thoroughly assessed.
All right, so what types of individuals are you guys targeting?
Um elderly and disabled, um sixty five above, uh elder, um you know, the age.
But that memory care, not Alzheimer's patients?
Uh they have a certain institutional facility that specialized with that.
Yes, with the memory care.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not ant- anticipating.
Uh no, no.
Alzheimer's, right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so over sixty five, so that's a population that. A lot of times needs physical therapy, occupational therapy, sometimes speech therapy if they have a stroke or something.
Yeah.
What what is your plan? And can you go over again the the level of care you two are? Um planning on uh treating, the level of care you're trying to administer?
Um the level of care, um you know, um it group home, we don't do medical, we don't do um. Uh skilled nursing, we don't do that. Uh we only uh uh our group home will uh help us those. The activity, the personnel, you know, those uh residents or elderly or disabled for their. Um for the A B L or um those uh uh people that they cannot live alone. And they need uh somebody to be with them. We can do that. But when it changes that they need a a higher level of care and they get sick. Um they need to go to the institutional setting, different one. Nursing home can do that, a hospital can do that, you know. Yeah, there's other options. We can, we can refer to other um institutions that they can. Uh take care of those uh residents or, you know.
So how would you evaluate uh your patients?
Um, we have policies and procedures in place as a group home. And uh we do assessment we'll get from, I know your question is about operational. And um this is uh the our policies and right on procedures will be approved by the state. The Department of, you know, the state. So they'll see, and we will do assessment, just like, you know, some other institution. We do assessment, we do uh, you know, like um uh. We uh get the medical history, the primary care physician, yeah, and the family uh will be get involved in this.
Uh you said you were a physical therapist?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can, you can give ph- physical therapy too.
Exactly, yeah.
As well.
Okay, so you're both a reg-, so you're a registered nurse as well as a uh physical therapist?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah.
I worked uh White Plains for five years as a physical therapist, so I also have a background for that. If the patient is uh been discharged for rehab, we can do a a level of one, level two care for that. Uh cardiac rehab and everything. But you know, we we follow what the state's uh policies and procedure is.
Yeah, oh also, I do think that there would be an increase in traffic with, you know, the demographic that you're targeting. And especially if they are a high needs group, then that would. In theory, lead to different types of deliveries that would accommodate them, you know, if you're trying to install a certain type of bed or chair. I think you guys had already installed a ramp, so those are all things that.
Yeah, the traffic, yeah, the traffic engineer from the S L R International Corporation said that. There is room to accommodate more than half a dozen vehicles in our site. So it it won't, it won't be a problem. If we need to, you know, to do. Like, uh if they say that it's not enough, we see the needs, we will uh, yeah, we will consider.
Additional parking space.
Parking space or plan for that.
All right, and also in an era where we have four different viruses uh circulating all at once. Whether it's norovirus, flu, coronavirus, and you know, dirt flu, avian flu. In the event that you both uh were to fall ill at the same time, how would you guys go about? Ensuring uh care for your patients?
Yeah, that's a very valid questions that uh we would like to answer you that. Uh again, our family uh has a lot of the healthcare professionals that can uh do. And um back up us with this kind of um staffing that you will, that you're asking. I mean, uh we have a a lot of nurses in the family in case.
Yeah.
Her or me get sick, we have a lot of backup, uh family backup for being a registered nurse. Or being, having a lot of healthcare profession in the family. But that's again, that's op- that's operational. I mean, it's it's also again with the with the policies and procedure for the store that, for the state.
Yeah.
JJ, I think you had an additional question.
I did have a second question, thank you for remembering. So um. Uh my my question is just in regards to your well being. I mean, that's a lot you're taking on, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. And then relying on family to plug and play whenever you need them. Why aren't you relying on the the services from the state?
I mean, you, we can do that. What what we're saying is based on our experience. I mean, this is just uh, we we work in the facility where the ratio is one nurse is to forty, one nurse is to thirty. Uh I mean, this is, I I'm not bragging that we can do it, but for me, one is to three is really. Very, very um, I mean, minimal for us.
Yeah.
And we can definitely take, uh cater for for uh residents, so who needs our care?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you have a follow up or? No, okay, Emmy.
Thank you, Nick. Um a couple of questions, so. Does the average person that comes to you look to stay for a certain amount of time? Or are they there for the rest of their days?
Yeah.
Yeah, um uh it, they can be discharged when family wants to do it. Or the, if the doctor, the the P C P will say that they cannot stay in our group home and they need other, you know. Higher level of care, but they can stay with us as long as they want us to stay within our, with our care.
So um theoretically, then you could get three patients that could stay there for five years. And there would be no patient turnover?
Yeah, yeah, if they still, yeah, if still uh the family still feels that other, their loved ones are safe. And we are uh under the regulation of the state, and we're providing the good quality of care, that's what we really want. That they can go up to their end of life.
And would the average person that would come and stay with you, they wouldn't be somebody that's driving a car? They'd be there.
They're they're not safe to drive, you know, when it comes to safety, we don't allow that. We um it's uh something that we are uh, it it's our, you know what, it's our license. We're talking about if we allow that, if you, if we have a license to protect, a license for the group home, we have our, you know. A license as a registered nurse or, you know, as a healthcare worker, so. Like, for our priority is the safety of our residents.
Okay, and if if one of your patients needed to go to the doctor. Who would provide that transportation? And what was, what's your general plan? How how do they get there?
Yeah, we can provide the um the transportation for our residents.
Really? Okay, so if if one of the two needed to go just to a regular doctor's appointment, you guys would drive them?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um that's it for now, thank you.
Anna.
I have many, I have a list question. Um can you pull up the floor plan that was included on the screen?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay. Oh, this is different than the floor plan I saw. I don't see any of this. Did you guys, do other people see the traffic study and all this?
I couldn't download it.
I see the D S S application and the proof, the V G I S, and then I see a floor plan. But it looks like there's a lot more here.
Yeah, this is what we have on the city website.
Interesting. Yeah, I, I just wanna see the one, it's a one-page horizontal with the floor plan.
See if I can find that.
Um, I'll skip to a different question while he's playing that up. Who prepares the meals and you do and provides the activities?
Yeah, we do. We have plans, we have uh uh is uh included with the state uh that we have to present them uh for a month, uh plan for our C V Ps and for the meals. It's the same thing as, you know, assisted living or nursing home. We have that plan uh for the month. We do that for the.
And with this type of twenty-four hour care, twelve-hour shifts, is the caregiver allowed to sleep during the night, or does somebody have to be awake the whole time?
They're, oh, we're staying here, we'll be staying here.
So monitoring with uh, with uh cameras and everything, we don't need to really uh be, that, that.
Be awake?
Yeah.
So you guys have experience and you're gonna continue work one week on, one week off, where you're a living caregiver for somebody for a week, you're there twenty-four seven, you're pretty much sleeping when they're sleeping. And then when it's your off week, you're gonna be basically doing the same thing, but at the house that you live in for three people, is that accurate? Okay, so that's um, took me a while to get there. But that's a slightly different understanding that I think I thought about when first hearing this application. Um, so it's basically like, if you guys, like you said, if you had mom, dad, and an in-law, they're pretty much homebound, and you either were not working, or you're trading off work shifts with your spouse, taking turns being the person in charge of them, but you're not necessarily awake watching them. You can take one of them to the doctor and leave the other two at home, um, sort of like my kids and my husband. But you're not, it, it's just that you're not related to those three.
Exactly.
But you're caring for them like, like your family. Okay, do we have the floor plan? Not yet.
Not yet, and I'm looking for it.
Okay, um, next question, uh, I went by today to see the house and there was a car parked on the lawn. What's that about?
I think it's uh when we bought the house, um, the, 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 the owner have their own uh boat, boat trailer on that one. It's like with uh paved with uh, with sand and gravel, so I mean, it, it's, there's no there's no grass in that one, so sometimes I just utilize that, it's just beside the, the trash bin that we have.
Is there not room in your driveway for two cars to park side by side?
I mean, we can do that, but sometimes I opted to uh, to, to, to use that, just to have a, you know, if there's a snow removal, I can just easily uh plow it.
Okay, um, and then, I guess, cause we still don't have the floor plan, uh, do you want me to share my screen and I'll pull it up?
Yeah, that might better, Anna.
Okay, let me see if I can do this. Thank you. Uh. Yeah, you see the floor plan? Okay, see, you see my mouse?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, okay. So are these the three bedrooms for your residents that you're caring for?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so they share two bathrooms across the hall, they have a kitchen and a bedroom, a breakfast room. And then over here, it looks like there's three bedrooms over here and sort of like two living rooms, and it's designated apartment kitchen, and you guys are the only people living there. Like, is this just storage, or I understand this used to be an A D U, like I, I'm, yeah, I'm wondering, are there gonna be other people living here?
That's, that's, that's still an existing A D U. I mean, uh, yeah, we utilize that.
Okay, so is that gonna be rented out as an A D U? That there's gonna be other people living there?
No, once we approve, we'll get approval and we'll get the license to operate, uh, that would be included as one as a rest, you know, as a rest, rest home, yeah.
And this is a six-bedroom house, and what I heard you saying is there's gonna be five adults living there.
Yeah.
Is, are there gonna be more than five?
No, that's about it.
Thank you.
The one room can be used as like a guest room?
A guest room, yeah, receiving, yeah.
If there's, yeah, if there's a family wants to, you know.
To stay with the, with the resident, they can, they can use that.
Just a guest room.
Uh, Steve, let this see your hand just pop up.
Just to clarify for everyone, the, the health department will base the septic system based on the number of bedrooms proposed. That will be what the hurdle is. Um, and then the licensing for the for their facility is based on what the state issues, so that's just kinda two, two different things.
Well, Steve, you say based on what the state issues. Um, what about Richard's question? If we limit it strictly to um three residents in care, um, it would seem, if, if, if we're allowed to do that, um, then uh the state can say they can have twelve uh people. But uh according to what we've approved, they can still only have three. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, so if the condition of the approval was three, I honestly, I'm still a little bit confused about the two different the three and the six based on the difference competing, or not competing, but differing state agencies on what they were approved for, so that might be good to clarify that a little bit, at least in my mind.
Well, the way that I understand it is based upon the square footage.
Yeah.
They have, they, they, they have the space to accommodate six, however, they only wanna do three.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, it's the local.
You haven't answered my question. Do we have the authority to limit that facility to three?
Yeah, based on, so our limitation for the three is based on the parking. So they can only accommodate three parking spaces based on the site layout. And then the other limiting constraint, the other constraint is the, the septic capacity, which is ultimately determined by the health department, at which point, I know Ms. Valentin said that they have a verbal approval from health, but I mean, we, we will only recognize a written approval, so until we, that's where we're waiting to hear back from, from Sean and his analysis.
At this point, does any, any of commissioners have any further questions before we move to the public hearing portion?
Diana has a question.
Yes, Diana emailed me, let me see what she sent.
Brian?
Um, so Diana asked if there will be children in the home, and then how is the space separated?
Yeah. So currently, we have three kids right now, and we're using the A D U for, for us and the kids, so that's gonna be our uh, um um, space for, for the resident and us, the primary caregiver.
And then, as far as like how that's, how it's separated between where the area is for the, the rest home versus the area that will be used by you and your fa- family?
The A U D.
Yeah, it's a legal A U D that's separated with the, with the, with the two uh um, one bedroom, and it's uh, you can see on the floor plan that uh there's um an existing uh
A U, A U T.
A U D, a legal uh apartment, which can be utilized for, for the primary caregiver, which is us, and uh is enough for the accommodate for, for, for my family too.
So it's eight adults, two of you, three children, or, or teens or something, it's eight people.
Yeah.
Five, yeah.
Would you be able to access the rest home portion of the structure from the residential portion, your residential portion, or is it completely separate?
Yes.
Exit.
It's connected.
Yeah. So just an easy access on that one is uh uh fully uh connected on that, uh you don't need to go out to, to go for the, for the restroom. There's an um, an access going to the restroom and going to the A D U.
Does anybody have any other questions at this point?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, more of a clarification. Uh, Louis asked specifically if something like what I had suggested was considered, um, could it be done? And so I just wanna ask this. This is a special permit application. There are a number of considerations when granting one of these. Um, and I have uh some serious concerns about the ability of the street to handle um this simply because it's so small. There are churches and group homes on the street that I live on, which is um triple A zone. But the difference is, is that the street is probably thirty feet wide, so when we have the almost nightly visits of the ambulance, the fire truck, and the police car and that come, um, they can go by, they can go to where they're going and continue on their way. I can't even imagine what it's gonna be like on that street with the visits that are undoubtedly gonna come because of the clientele that's there. So I'm saying that because if we do decide, um that we're shaky on it and the applicant is willing to limit their utilization of this property, I don't know why we can't make it a condition of approval. And, and Steve, I'd, I'd really like that you know, clarified before we get to the point where we have to vote. Did we have, did I get an email today that said we're not voting on this tonight for some reason?
Yeah, yeah, I, you can't really take action until you know. I mean, the, the, the bedroom issue is somewhat moot until the health department says what's permitted in totality anyway, so we need to, need to get that clarified.
So I, uh, you know, again, I would ask that, um, you know, my question about whether we have the authority to do that or not is, is uh available to us, that option?
Right, so um I just have one additional question, if I may?
Hold on, JJ. I just wanna get Richard's question answered, but if Steve hasn't.
Yeah, I, I think there, there are a couple outstanding questions, that's one of them, I think. Another one is really related to what their facility is, cause I, I'm hearing two different things, basically, and in between the materials and the presentation about whether it's a group home or whether it's kind of what we had approved a few years back as more of like a, you know, like, almost like a, you know, lack of better terms, like a mini nursing home. So I think there's a, a distinction between the two. There's a distinction that I believe the state will draw in terms of their licensing and, and also what the, the authority of the, the city is at that point as well, but I think we need to A, clarify that, B, clarify the septic as well, because that's gonna really dictate the uh the volume of the space and the kind of level of activity that happens inside there, so those are, those are all things. And then assuming it's, it's kind of the, you know, mini nursing home model that sounds like what they're pursuing, then I think, yes, the special permit provisions with the conditions are appropriate, in addition to the fact that the applicant has uh appeared to agree to limit their total number of, uh, I guess, clients under their care to three.
Uh, JJ, you had a question?
Yes, um, I just had a question in regards to transportation and, like I said, I, I'm sorry if you already answered this earlier. So, will you be driving a vehicle that is exclusively used for the um, for nurse, for the nursing home capability for transporting your clients? Or will you be using your own personal vehicle to transport them to daughter's appointments and to others?
No, it's just like, um, if my grandma or my grandpa gets sick, I mean, and, and they have a doctor's appointment, I definitely gonna use my own S U V personal car, bring them to the doctors. So that's what um my, our answer is, our personal own, uh, which uh we know that they are, they are safe and we are, they are capable to, to go on and off on the car, we might uh utilize that.
So how many vehicles do you have that will be in the parking lot?
Two.
Right now, right now, we have two.
We have two, right now.
Just two, and so you're anticipating getting a third?
Once we get the license and we have the residence, we could probably get four of the residents that, you know.
For, for the residents alone.
For residents alone, you know.
There'll be three vehicles?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
And, and, and then what is the age of your children?
Eight, seven?
Yeah, we got um.
Seven, twelve, and fourteen.
Too young to drive.
Yes.
They're all girls, by the way.
They're all girls, so, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to picture, are we gonna, are you gonna have five cars in your lot, you know?
No, long way, long way to go through.
Over time, though.
I mean, this is a six-bedroom house that could easily, it's, it's a six-bedroom house on the V G I S. It could easily be occupied by six adults, all with cars, or four adults or four adults and four kids sharing bedrooms. And I do think that's like too many people and too many cars for the area in the street, but it would be allowed. Anybody could move in with that. I mean, it's a six-bedroom, three-bath house.
Yeah.
It's just weird, there's got relatively narrow driveway, relatively narrow street. They're already parking a car on what is, in fact, a lawn. Um, but uh but this, this sounds very much not different than a family with three elderly people at home. To be quite honest, and I'd be concerned, um, I'd be concerned about making sure that we're not making decisions assuming that people of a certain age or disabilities are gonna use more of the services that we're all allowed to, to use, right? My kid has a physical therapist that comes to a home, my neighbor has a special van that picks up her husband, somebody has an emergency, nine-one-one comes, I mean, I, I don't know. I just wanted to throw that out there.
That's a good point, Anna.
With that, do any other commissioners have questions at this point for the applicant? Seeing none, I think we'll move to the public hearing portion. Uh, Brian, in a second, can you give the instructions on how folks can raise their hand, but just to set some ground rules with folks, we don't limit time, uh, but if you can be uh concise, it's most appreciated. If someone has said the concerns that you have, you can just reference the previous speaker. This is not a one-to-one back and forth, this is a the public fully gets to speak, and then at the end, the applicant will have the opportunity to respond either tonight or uh for a continuation for a um, another, for the, our next meeting, which may make the most sense given some of the larger open questions here. Uh, but with that, uh, Brian, can you give the instructions for uh the public to uh how they can participate?
Sure, so for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen, you would just click that once. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine. So first we have Jacqueline Lane.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and if you can state your full name, sorry, I failed to mention this, and your address.
Sure, sure. My name is Jacqueline Lane and I live at three BlackBerry Lane, um, in Norwalk, of course. And I, I, the second letter that I received from the Velotons, the certified letter, said that they were now going to be accepting eighteen-year-olds and older, so. I was confused about that. And also on one forty six, as I'm sure everyone here is aware, on one forty six Silvermine Avenue in Norwalk. I spoke to one of the directors, that's the lower Fairfield Regional Center of Norwalk. And they, it they, it's like, you know, down the um on Silvermine Avenue and we're off of Comstock. So it's relatively in close proximity to our street. And they, they are well under capacitated and for the housing that they have available. So I'm just not sure why the state would need to put in a residential group home on our quiet dead end street. When they have the um unfulfilled capacity a thousand feet away down and and the lower Fairfield um residential group home facility that's run by the state has its own road. It's basically is its own property. You don't even notice it there. And so that's one of my, that's what I'm a little bit confused about. Is it gonna be eighteen year olds? And then another question that struck me is that um Mr. Velaton keeps saying three residents for now. And the Velotons have told me there's themselves after telling me that the house was just for them and their three young children. Um then a couple months later, I get a certified letter saying that it's to have a group home. So those are my concerns that that I I just don't feel like I have very trusting neighbors and it just sets a uh like a a red flag for me. And then the second thing is that when I asked um the regional center what their age capacity is for their applicants to res- reside at their group home. He said it's twenty one and above because eighteen year olds are too much of a liability. So I'm thinking eighteen year olds are too much of a liability in a in a huge, like maybe seven or eight acre point. So how much of a liability is it gonna be next door to me? And also, um you know, they do get deliveries with big box trucks and the I've witnessed that the box truck goes to the bottom of the street because there's no turnaround. And then they back into the neighbor's driveway down the street to come out of the street. Um face forward with their truck. And I'm I'm not, you know, I'm a registered nurse for thirty five years and have served in the community as well. And I I understand the 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 concept of taking care of patients. So and they do park on the grass. And so if you have two vehicles from the work, from the Velotons, two vehicles for the Velotons and then a third possible vehicle to just transport the patients and then visitors. When, where would they park? Their driveway is only a single long driveway as my driveway is that is as well. So when I have visitors, we all have to park in a row. And then when somebody wants to leave, everyone else in the home has to go out and move their car. So um anyway, those are my concerns and I've emailed them and um I would uh I would, I respect the fact that I know that the planning and zoning board um will take all of this into consideration and I thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Next is Amy Francis.
Amy, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Still can't hear you, Amy. Try checking um your microphone input. What I'll do is I'll move you back over and then I'll I'll call over, I'll call on you later. Um next, we have a phone number ending in five, six, nine, zero. To unmute, you had just hit star six.
Good evening. This is Amy Francis. Can you hear me?
Ah, there you are. Yes.
Hi, I don't have a microphone on my computer, so I'm doing it on the phone. Um.
Can you just give us your address, please?
Pardon me?
Just give us your address.
Seventeen BlackBerry.
Thank you.
I have concerns regarding the actual staffing. I think that it's a good idea that they uh the family can work twelve hour shifts and then work outside the residence at another job. And if they were to become ill, that family members could come in who are registered nurses could come in and help. But what is the plan for a COVID situation where the entire house is down? What is, what is your plan for that? What is your plan for, if you're not gonna have staffing right now? It will be one of you to be with the residents and the other one will be at the other paying jobs. And you have to take one of the residents to a doctor's appointment. These are supposed to be residents who are unable to live alone. So you're comfortable with having three residents and one um at a doctor's appointment with the only caregiver that with them and then the other two people are left unattended with no assistance? That that's kind of uncomfortable. I'm very concerned about the septic. I happen to live at the bottom of the hill. So it it's concerning to me. I understand that it has, the septic has failed in the past. And um I just don't wanna see that happening. And uh as Mrs. Lane said a few minutes ago, a truck had to come down and uh back up in a driveway to be able to turn around to go back out the street. That was my driveway. Uh there is a small cul-de-sac down here, but the street is not wide. The street, in fact, in front of their house is the most narrow, if you look at the property itself. I'm concerned about the number of residents. The answer is always three for now. Are you going to be living in the house? Four now? I I don't understand what that means. Um tonight, you finally have mentioned your three children. Nobody has seen your three children for a length of time, not at a school bus, not in the front yard playing. They used to be. Haven't seen them in a while. Are they still living in the house? Thank you for listening to us. I I'm just very concerned that this little tiny quiet street is gonna have way too much activity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, um is uh Laura. Magnus, I I will not try to say her last name.
Thank you. That's all right. My name is Laura Magnuson and I live at one BlackBerry Lane along with my husband. Um my concerns regarding the uh proposal for five BlackBerry Lane were emailed to the committee. Um I I based on what you guys have said, I I appreciate that you have read it. Um some of the questions that have come up for me as we listened to um the presentation and follow up comments are I know that the um the the Valentons are anticipating staffing this themselves. Um but what happens if the care plan of the individual patients or residents? Um what if they require more staff? How will the Valentons handle that? What if the residents need two people on staff at all times? Um I know a member of the committee also asked about meals and who would be preparing them. Um is it anticipated that the Valentons themselves are going to be cooking and serving all of these meals? Um finally, the other concern I have is, you know, this is going to be a quasi medical facility. How are we going to handle medical waste in a neighborhood that has a septic system and city water and no garbage pickup from the city? Um those are my main concerns. Um but I probably will have others as more of these, more of the questions that have been raised tonight are answered, but I do thank the committee for their time.
Thank you.
Next, we have um Diane.
Hello.
Hi there.
Our husband Steve on her laptop.
If you can give us your last name and your address, that'd be wonderful.
Name is Curtisis and we're at number eleven BlackBerry Lane.
Thank you.
Uh thank you. I I have obviously quite a number of concerns myself. Um I I don't know if I can put in in a priority of order um other than one that strikes me to start with is uh from the onset that these people have been here, it's been very surreptitiously that they have gone about everything that they've been trying to do to get this place in shape and seemingly without any neighbors aware, other than they're a family that had moved in with three children. And again, to uh the point that was just made about the three children, we haven't seen them quite some time, even though they say that they are residents there. And it seemed as when you people first asked them about the number of residents, that they said it was just going to be them, those two, the caregivers and three additional people that were receiving the care. Then when you guys kind of pushed them a little bit and asked a little bit more questions, they said, oh, yes, and we have three children. They would also be living here. Uh and the point that was made about additional vehicles as the children become older, I thought that was a very good point, that there's going to be more and more vehicles as the children come of age and are going to want their own vehicles. I don't know that they would share vehicles, but that's certainly not necessarily my business. I would also kind of wonder how a personal vehicle could be approved to um transport a a state patient to a facility if that need were to arise. Um Mr. Valentine said it is his personal vehicle, just as if you're transporting your own parent or grandparent or something like that, that that would be a different family situation. If this is a person that's under the care of the state. Um I'm not sure that they would be covered under their own personal vehicle, but again, I'm not sure about that. I I don't know if that's a red flag that uh would be, would would rise because of that. Um and again, many people and myself included have um brought up the septic being not not approved issue and as more and more people now we've discovered it's not five and you have three additional children, now it's eight. They've also said if there is a need to call in extra care. They they've more than once said it would only be the two of them. And yet they've also said if there's a need, they would call in extra care, not saying separate from them, but in addition to them being in this same facility, not at what length of time. Uh it's the the occupant space. I don't know what the approval would be on something like that. Let me see if I've got something. Uh I think somebody already touched on the twenty four, twenty four, seven care by two people of the the need arose to to bring a patient out while one of them is at work. The other one is there caring for the uh people and they they had to bring one of the the people under care to another place. That leaves two people there that are uncared for. So that that seems like it wouldn't be a a doable kind of a thing. Let me see. Now I had a couple more points if you if you um bear with me for a second. Oh, I'm I'm not even sure if anybody at the end of this could do it. Maybe I'm just being a little ignorant. What exactly an A U D is? I'd like some clarification on that. I probably should know that. But um it it seems to me the the issue also that has come up about uh additional people being approved later on. If they were to increase the parking size capability in front of their house and if they were to increase their septic, if they were approved for such a thing, then down the line, it would seem they might also be approved for the number of people, even though they've already been approved for more than three, up to six so far, that could change, as was already said, for now, that was what I remember hearing somebody say when they said three um for now, and then they insisted, no, it wasn't just for three or it wasn't going to be six, it was only for three. So that's kind of a an 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 gray area there. I think I've aired all I have for the moment. Um I appreciate your time. Hope I was uh clear enough in in some of the points I tried to make there. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else is interested in speaking, you could use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. You click that once. Um I s- I see Laura and Jacqueline's hand just went down. Um but because you'd already spoken, um generally, we don't allow you to speak twice. Yep, uh hand went went down. Bring them over. Looks like it's from an email address. Let's try that one.
Hey there.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
It's a little, it's a little, a little unclear here with whether I'm, um uh you can hear me or not, or or whether you want to hear me or not, but.
We can hear you and want to hear you, if you can just state.
Thank you so much. Uh yeah, first of all, uh uh like Steve and Amy, I had many concerns.
Can, sorry, sir, before you get going, can you just state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Joe Scamato. I live next door. I live in seven BlackBerry Lane. And I have a number of concerns like everybody else. Uh first of all, the the one that that we have chosen to live in a residential, a quiet residential area uh without commercial uh ventures. Uh this is clearly a a commercial venture, no matter how uh uh soft and fuzzy it might seem to have uh grandma living there. Uh and um so so that is a a a a primary uh uh concern. I I don't know how much they're charging. I don't know if there ha- are a Medicaid approved facility. Um I I I there are a lot of, there are a lot of questions involved. And 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 I have to say this, a general sense of of disingenuousness uh it surrounds this this uh venture. Um for example, that only five people are going to be living there and but but clearly in the beginning, uh Mrs. Valentine uh mentioned that they have people coming in part time, a a student. Uh presumably, they use the bathroom at some time during their stay there. And I am, you know, particularly sensitive to the uh to the septic problem. We have experienced before the uh waste uh coming down the the hill we've uh the 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 smell uh from septic problems. We all are 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 familiar with those once in a while. Um so so that is, I I I'm very concerned about that. I'm, one thing about the road that has not been mentioned yet is that we are uh on uh a fairly severe angle, um maybe a thirty degree angle and uh which is uh not important when the streets are dry, but in the snow. Um we, many of us have faced the problem of backing out and trying to get up that hill and failing and having to uh work our way back. Uh so so that is a a complicating factor uh on the road situation and the vehicles which undoubtedly are are coming in. I also have problems about the care, but I'm not sure that's the the um I I don't know that that that's that's within the purview of 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 this committee. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I don't know. Um uh but by the way, regarding the angle of the street, uh Commissioner Tabachneck, I think will can uh confirm that. And uh thank you for visiting. It was very, that's very nice of you to to have come and and kind of done your homework uh that way. Um it is a problem in the snow. Uh so let me add to that. The the I confirmed the questions about the, and this is part of my complaint about the just a a a an aura of disingenuousness, which is, which accompanies this whole venture. I myself live next door and I've never seen three daughters. I saw a little girl on um Halloween. When he came to the door, I was teaching a class, a Zoom class as it as it happened, so so I couldn't stay to talk to them. I saw a little girl, um but I don't know what what the whole family situation is. I'm I am hoping that the, in case it isn't clear. I'm, I am hoping that the, in case it isn't clear, I am hoping that this uh, uh, commission does not uh, grant this uh, special exception, whatever it's i- i- it's called. Um, and that, and that uh, these people choose to bring their commercial venture elsewhere. Uh, they will not have a problem selling the house and getting their money back, whatever they've uh, uh, put into it. Um, but there are a number of questions. Are they going to stay there? Are they going to live there? Um, the uh, it just, it, there are too many questions right now. Um, aside from there being generally a, a commercial company uh, with its uh, with, with its rather uh, un- uh, uh, being a, a rather unwelcoming feature to people, let's say who are going to, to uh, uh, real estate buy a house on our street. I think it will be a, a little less appealing than it is right now. And I think we've chosen, this is the, the, is, is it not the, the function of a zoning commission to this is the zone we've chosen to live in. We've chosen to live in a residential zone, a residential area, a quiet area. And this has just been a disruptive experience uh, from the get-go. And some of the things here, you, you, you've mentioned, uh, well, we have a plan to do, we have a plan to do this. Well, plans go awry as we know. And after the decision has been made, let's say a, a, a decision of approval is, is given and problems occur, then it's beyond the, the uh, power of this committee, of this commission to uh, to rectify that situation. It'll be too late. Uh, the uh, Mr. Valentine has mentioned that state comes in once a year. Well, that, that's, that seems preposterous to me. Uh, that, that a uh, uh, an organization, a business such as they, they've described and can, can be adequately uh, there could be adequate oversight uh, from a once a year visit. Who are these people? How much are they paying? Who is paying them? Is it just families? Is it, is, is federal money involved? These are all questions that are part of this uh, very unwelcome. And I should say challenge that tonight is not going to end. The answers it, to the, to the questions that we have, the concerns we have, the fears we have that our life investment is at risk from a a commercial venture, which could be, could be done in a more commercial area. It doesn't have to be done here. And I can pretty much assure you that uh, Jackie and, and Amy and Steve and, and, and other people will make further attempts if necessary uh, with the advice and uh, representation of counsel to uh, oppose this further. Uh, and we will, we will fight for our lives. We'll fight for our economic lives. And I think that for when someone is fighting for their life, you should listen to them and I hope you do. And I'm grateful for your hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak at this point?
Precisely.
Geraldine Patrizi. Geraldine, you just need to unmute yourself.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, if you can just give us your address as well.
Yes, fifteen BlackBerry Lane. I, I don't want to reiterate all of the concerns that my neighbors have had because I strongly share these concerns. I do want to thank the board for listening and for addressing the questions in the letters that I have written to you. So I feel that you have a good understanding of how I feel. I am at the very bottom of the hill on the same side as the Valetons. I live next door to Curtisis and I am at the bottom of the property that gets the cascading with every heavy rainfall of the pools of water from that property that settles on my property. I get them, I deal with them, and this has been going on for many, many years. Uh, prior to the, the um, the Veloton purchasing the property. So in my opinion, the septic has never been addressed to any satisfaction, let alone the safety of all the people who are getting the residuals from the overflow from that septic property. Um, again, I want to thank Mrs. Tabaknik for coming and taking a look at the, at the street and at the property. I think it, it, it speaks for itself when you look at the size of the property and anticipate the potential traffic that it's going to bring to the street as well as the property. I also mentioned in my letter that because we are off Comstock Hill, we get all of the huge utility uh, vehicles that come and work on Comstock. Not only uh, on Comstock, but they just uh, renovated the bridge for the last year and a half. All of that, all of those large vehicles uh, are not on Comstock Hill. They park on Blackberry Lane. That has been an ongoing concern. Lastly, I question again, how much has gone on without the knowledge and the correct permits on this property? Because I just became aware of the intentions of the Valetons um, in a letter that I received from uh, the Velatons in October of twenty-four. Yet for a whole year prior to that, there has been a lot of activity on that property. Both construction and other things that are happening long before we became aware of their venture, their commercial venture. Um, thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. With that, we'll, I think we'll ask one more time if there's anyone um, from the public wishing to speak at this point or have not spoken already.
Looks like Mr. Cantor.
Awesome. Um, first, I think, uh, Steve, did you wanted to, did you have a question or comment you wanted to make at this point?
Yeah, I think just to circle back and, and you can determine how much you want to interact or have response from the applicant at this point, but my recommendation would be one, we, we, I mean, I think we need to be a little careful um, about what the actual classification of the use is and which we can um, narrow down by communicating with the applicant and also reaching out to the state. Um, just because, and, and it's important for the, the neighbor's edification is that um, group homes are a protected class and they do have rights to operate within residential zones. That's state law and that's been on the books for many, many years. So we just need to kind of be careful of what we're actually talking about here. I think first and foremost though, on our end is to coordinate with the health department on the septic and I would urge the applicants to um, not waste any time with that because the hearing opened tonight. We have thirty-five days from tonight to close the hearing. So uh, I think important that, that, as I mentioned, the health department's going to look at the bedroom count when they're looking at the septics. That's going to determine how big the septic system has to be to accommodate that. And so the floor plans that are part of the application need to be consistent with what the septic system can handle. Um, my other suggestion would be because there were complaints early on that there was work done without permits. Um, I would like to have uh, set up an inspection with one of my staff members to take a walk through to see what the layout of the house is versus the floor plans to see if that work was done because I know the handicap ramp was installed. Um, I don't believe there were any permits for that. So if there was other work, like the garage was closed off or anything along those lines, it would be good to understand what the layout of the property is in terms of uh, the actual submitted floor plans. So that would pose that for the commission to consider.
Yeah, I think to echo Steve, I think there's a lot of serious questions that are open still. And it might make sense for this point for the applicant to step back and collect their thoughts and coordinate with staff a little bit, allow them for the inspection. I'm assuming you're okay with that. If you can give a thumbs up there or say yes, if that's okay with you. Uh, before giving your response so that you, you can have time to sort of prepare a more fulsome response. Cause I think the commission and the public have raised some significant concerns and valid points that I think we want to have addressed. But it's sort of a, you get one shot at the apple there. So if there's a question, go right ahead, but if, I don't know if you, what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, we're ready in talk with Mr. Peter Kelly about the court enforcement about that. Uh, about the ramp, we already applied for the retroactive permit on that one. And about the legalities of the, the, the AD, 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 ADU, we have the paper where that comes from our lawyers. So all the documents that they want for the, for the permit, we only did uh, cosmetic changes. We only did um, um, some of this uh, um, carpets and everything, general painting. And those are the things that we don't need a permit. So I don't think so that uh, we are violating any, anything. Or so that's why we are in talk with that, with that, or a code enforcement uh, already with Mr. Peter Kelly.
I guess Steve is asking a slightly different question if it's okay that, to work with him offline, to have someone come. And then at this point, do you want to proceed with your response or do you want to take the time to collect?
We can respond to some of the questions that is not clear with them.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Yes, I guess the, the thing here is there's one time for a response.
Okay.
So Steve, correct me if I'm wrong here.
Um, I think also that in all fairness of the public, if based on the, the public would have the opportu- I mean, it's a very technical document or technical approval at that point, but I think if the, there's, the health department signs off on that, the public should have an ability to look at that and have any questions or comments answered about that particular item. So makes sense to resolve that and then have the applicant sum everything up after that point, which we could, we could do. It's difficult to schedule a second meeting until we know when the septic is going to get approved. So once once that's done, then we can set the second hearing date.
Does that work with y'all?
Yeah, yeah.
Does the commission have any problems with going about it that way?
Quick question, I guess, for Steve. So the health department approves the septic based on the number of bedrooms in the house? Is that how it works?
Right, that's how they determine the capacity for the septic.
It's septic, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And sometimes the, depending on the soils, that, that might dictate how many bedrooms you can put in. Cause sometimes if you have bad soils, you can only get a three-bedroom house versus a four-bedroom or a five-bed. So if they were on city sewer, it wouldn't be an issue. It would be a different, different conversation.
Thank you.
Next.
So go ahead, Tammy.
Just to answer the person that asked what the ADU is, it's accessory dwelling unit. Just so that we could tell him, so he doesn't go to bed frustrated.
Thank you.
Accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, great. So I think we don't need a vote to, for continuation. Do we, Steve, Brian, I forget?
No, I think you can just continue, continue the hearing.
Okay, so we will continue this once Daphne y'all have connected and we'll figure out what, when's the next time for it to come back. Thank you for the time and thank you to the public.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have capital budget committee and schedule. Um, Brian, I jump in here, but I think Tammy has graciously volunteered to lead that subcommittee. Again, thank you for that. I think we're looking to, if anyone else, we're looking for a few volunteers to also join. And then Brian can talk about timing and things like that. Um, if for folk.
Yeah, if anyone's interested in serving on the, the committee, how it worked last year, which I think was better than years past, was we just did one all-day in-person meeting at City Hall. We got breakfast and lunch for everybody. And we had all the departments come down and, and meet with the committee to discuss uh, their capital budget proposals. At this point, Tammy shot us some dates, but we're, we're looking for the last week of January, hopefully, to, to do that meeting. Um, and just trying to get on a schedule with all the departments to let them know.
So Brian is, after last year, we sort of thought it's very interesting to listen to these capital budgets, very interesting and I think worth hearing. But we as the planning and zoning really do not have much impact on the outcome. So I'm just wondering, was there a conversation amongst the planning and zoning staff to change, not necessarily the format, but the outcome of the format of the meeting, meetings?
Without, I, unless there was a change to the ordinance, I don't think you, it would be much more than it is today. I think you'd have to change that piece of it because, because if you remember from your time on the planning commission, you guys used to prepare a separate capital budget. Um, I don't think that had a lot of weight to it, which is why we kind of scrapped that portion of it. Um, so that's really, I think without going back to a model, something like that, I think you're kind of where you're at.
Okay. Come on, other people volunteer. It was actually really interesting.
I'm not, not volunteering, not volunteering.
Yeah.
But um, clear about that, but um, I wonder you know, since based on the ordinance, I wonder if maybe the people who've done this before, I would be curious to know if not now, at some other time, like how would you want it to be changed? Like what, what role do you think this commission should have related to the capital budget? And or should this commission not have a role at all related to the capital budget? And if there's something that, that we think it, the way it should be, like we could ask ordinance what they think, right?
Y- yeah, so, oh, the budget requests had to align with uh, the P O C D, the Plan of Conservation and Development, which we all know is uh, certainly open to interpretation and a bit of a Rorschach. And I think we would have to really start there, but that's just my own perspective.
But right, but I mean, like, that's what it is. But like, what do you think it should be?
Well, besides.
He be more specific, I think than the, then it would, we would have more weight.
When, if, Darius, if you're done.
I'm done.
Okay, sorry. And, and I was on the planning commission when it was just the planning commission. And we literally would sit around the table and debate how the capital budget should be spent and whether we thought certain things were more important than others. And that, I think the general idea was that people that were on the planning commission were out there with the general public and they would hear, you know, yeah, we want a ball field. No, we don't. We think this is more important than that. And we made recommendations to the mayor's office prioritizing things, whether it was to keep things, add things or get rid of things. And, and then the um, CFO would say, well, you know, all these capital items cost X and we're only going to. You know, all these capital items cost X and we're only going to give them Y. And then we would say, okay, but we think these are the priorities of of what they're going to offer, you know, for capital funds. And. We like, we thought we'd like, or we liked to think that we did actually have some influence. Um, but I I don't feel that that's the situation from from the way we did it last year. There were a couple of items that were. In my opinion, should not be capital items. They were. Um, I mean, I could say specifically, there was uh money for celebrations for certain holidays like the um celebration on Water Street. Um, the celebration, help me out here, Lou, I think you were there. Um.
Washington.
Washington Street.
The Halloween.
What I'm what I'm trying to figure out, I'm sorry if I'm not being clear. What do you think our role should be? Are you saying that you think? It should be the way it was when there was a separate planning committee and that was working really well? Or like, like if you were designing this whole thing from scratch.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think uh there at this point in time that there's a legitimate role for us.
Okay, yeah, in a way, because.
Because because whether it was just the planning commission or the planning and zoning commission, we were not listened to. Um, you know, it's a complicated process with many steps. And we were one of the steps, frankly, that that was ignored. Um, and I don't mean that with any hostility.
Sure.
Because it's a complicated process. So uh. Uh, you know, that's why I haven't, I mean. Tammy is absolutely right. It's very interesting to listen. Uh, to what each of the departments is looking for in the capital budget. Um, but I'm not volunteering. Um, because I don't, I don't see any value uh for the planning and zoning commission to be involved anymore.
Right now, there's ordinance, but there's also charter revision committee that's open.
Well, I don't think that wasn't part charter revision is definitely not. Part of what reviewing the capital budget is, and I don't think there were any questions about reviewing the capital budget and charter revision.
I thought they were looking at the budget approval process as a whole. So I mean, whether it's charter revision or ordinance, my point is that like. I I would be interested in knowing as a group. Or people like just putting that somebody putting out proposals of like an actual change that you would want to see. Whether that's we have absolutely no role anymore, please take us out of the mix. Or is there a way you could make a role this instead of that? Or whatever.
The the one little, and it's a small tweak that we had done with like the last. Like, because what what happens is after. The all the presentations are done, you guys go through and, you know, say, okay, yes, all these things are consistent with the plan of conservation development and. That gets passed on to the mayor's office for as part of their, you know, review of the all the capital requests. The one thing I thought. Where you guys might be able to have some influence if there was a, you know, some particular projects that you felt were. More um worthy of funding at this particular time, say you really were interested in a um. Park improvement that was proposed and you felt that would be a great need and was consistent with some other. Planning studies or planning documents that had um been approved and you could. Add some weight to those by advocating for those and and really trying to push for those. That's the one area I thought in terms of the. Capital process, but I think the other, the the bigger picture is. Other point of it is in terms of, you know, in as in addition to being interesting and learning about the. Capital request, you do get uh. Questions about uh capital budget purchases and capital budget items that come back to this commission on occasion. And at least at that point, you might have some familiarity with the project prior to that. So that's just a small thing.
Right, but that's exactly what I was saying when it was just the planning commission. We did try to influence what. We thought were the important things because for sure the chief financial officer was going to cut it back. And now now we have nothing.
Yeah, I think we could also, I mean, if the, I don't know if these this this meeting where we meet with the departments, if it if you don't feel it's necessary, I don't. It's not necessarily required. It's required that we hold a a public hearing. On the budget, but meeting with the departments isn't necessarily like a unnecessary step. We have the. PDFs of the capital budget requests. We have the budget binders. Those can get delivered to you. I don't know if it's worth that. Those are delivered to you and you all individually review them and then.
Brian, I thought it said they may hold a public hearing. I didn't think they said they had to hold.
So 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 for thirty dash seven, it's it's just on or before February fifteenth, and each year the planning and zoning commission shall hold hearings on the proposed. So I think we have to at least hold the public hearing.
And but our meeting was a public hearing. Nobody from the public shows up.
Right, right. So that I'm talking about this this pre-meeting that the committee does to meet with all the departments. That that step is not. Necessary. If that if that you feel is, you know, if if the role is. Doesn't. If essentially what you guys are doing isn't viewed by whoever. Then why take a whole day to go to these requests if we could just deliver you the PDFs and then you each individually. Review them and then have those prior to whenever we have that public hearing.
Some questions.
To you or something like that? Oh, go ahead, JJ.
Oh, okay. So I I circled a capital budget um two years in a row. And I found it very um enlightening and educational. To be able to be in the same room with the department heads while they're making their presentation, while they're making their pitch. And it, you know, in person, questions will come up to you. You know, while you're facing a person that may not come up to you while you're just looking at a piece of paper. And so I found it very, um, as I said before, educational. I found the experience, you know, to be um very informative. I agree, JJ. I think it is, but you know, it takes a whole day and whether you might not. Have a work schedule that allows that or you do, but it is interesting. There's no doubt about it. You find out a lot about what's going on in the city. Which for us on planning and zoning is a good thing. We need to be as informed as we possibly can. Exactly. But we have no impact on it, that's all. It's just like going to a seminar to learn about something and yet it does give us an opportunity to ask the department heads. A lot of questions. So then I'll phrase my question a different way.
Should there, I know there's currently required. But should there be a public hearing that planning and zoning holds and. We listen to the public and we send a list of our top three priorities and it doesn't matter because. Council and B T does whatever they want. Or should we get rid of that part and keep the invite all of us to. The full day thing so that we can have that face to face and better under, like, should we take ourselves out of the actual or request to be taken out of? The the hearing recommending not real decision making part of things. And say we want to stay in the informed loop. We don't really want to be part of this. Or or should we try to grab more power? Say we want our three decision, our three recommended things. Uh, in order to not fund them, you have to write a three page essay or something like that. That's what I'm saying, like.
I thought I I I think the hearing piece of it to me is always a large waste of time that that for the commission, not for. Not that there shouldn't be public hearings on the capital budget request, but I think for this group, I thought that was always kind of a waste.
Steve, do the department heads give the same presentation to the common council?
Yeah, I don't know how much it differs in terms of the detail given. I always thought that like it would have made sense for them. To try, I mean, it would be a lot of logistics, but for the departments to just do a single presentation to all the bodies at once.
Right, that's what I was going to say. Everybody all at once in the common council chambers. It does take. A long time and the more people there are, the more questions that they have. You know, the longer it will take, but. It took two nights when we did it with and when it was just the planning commission. We had two very long nights.
Yeah, very, very long nights.
An understatement and a half.
You know what I wondered tonight? Um, I forgot where we were in the pecking order with Alan's um presentation on um. The community center. I think we were third and he was going someplace else tomorrow. And I mean, I really felt like when I was sitting there. You know, we have to do this because we have a six million dollar grant we're going to lose. And it's really not going to cost the city any money because we saved two and a half million on um. Uh, Cranberry School. So. Even though this project is much more than we thought it was going to be, you know, it's really not going to cost anymore because we have this found money. And I really wanted to say no. I, you know, I don't want to do this, you know? Um, but it did sound like a good project and all that stuff, but I did wonder to myself, what if everybody felt like I did and we all said no? What what would happen?
So there's overrides in place. So you, so if you all.
Nothing would happen.
Four or special appropriation were to deny it, it would go to council and they can override it with a two thirds.
Okay, so there you go.
Same thing with the capital budget.
Yeah.
These are areas where, and I think the concerns that we might have with the capital budget or even with something like the thing tonight, like the concern that I had wondering like, could this money be better used?
That's what made me think about it because.
But like, those are not concerns, like, those are, I I my understanding is that, like. It it's not necessarily our role to have those types of concerns. We're supposed to have concerns about like planning and zoning, not like as a citizen, I would, you know, I would like to see the money stay in the schools because. I care about the school. That's like citizen hat, right? So uh. I just wonder if if there's a way to say. We're not sure if we should be involved in some of these processes of a certain way.
I think we can raise those things. I don't think we're going to be able to solve that between now.
I mean, when I was on, I had both books. I had the the book from the previous year. Open with a new book and I was able to look, compare them and say, you spend, you 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 ask for this much money. The previous year and now you're asking for this much money, you know, there's a fall between, you know, what what's new about this project? And so you, it it is a comparison. It's a it's a way for you to, as you say, be informed. Also to get the visual of what is happening with the money, have transparency, and to Richard's point, you know what? Hold them fiscally responsible.
I I mean, the other thing, it's it, and I think. If you're thinking about your role in in the longer term planning for the city, it's it's good to understand. How things kind of lay out in terms of project timeline and what you're going to see down the road and how that impacts. Some of the other decisions you make, even though they're not always a direct corollary, but. You know, the the more the city spends in capital programs for schools, whatever, how does that impact what you're going to. See or approve in terms of housing or other kind of development. So there's there's a tie in there. So it's good to. I think from the, at the very least, it's good on the informative side.
So I think we still folks think about if you want to or are able to volunteer for the subcommittee. We do need probably two other folks to be able to do it. Don't have the answer right now, but um. Please think about that and then.
And we can email.
Nominate Chapin. He's not here.
Chapin and Hector.
Voluntold. Uh, sorry, Steve, you said you were going to email something?
I said we can email Hector and.
Headline, surprise, congratulations. You've just been appointed. Uh, and Tammy, thank you again for leaving that subcommittee. I know it's a lot of time.
You're welcome.
Uh. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes from December fourth.
I'll move approval of the minutes.
We have a second. All in favor, I think we can do this with a show of hands.
I wasn't able to view and I couldn't download any documents. So I staying.
Okay, and it might be good, JJ, if you want to email Brian or Steve and they can walk through with you.
Yeah.
Portal uh to make sure you have.
We are learning on the fly as well.
Yeah, that's what it seems. It seems like everyone's learning on the fly.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, comment to the director, Steve, I think you have some updates on things.
Yeah, so the draft, the like real public draft of the Affordable Housing Plan is going to come out hopefully Friday. So we've scheduled a joint meeting with the common council for. January thirtieth, we'll send out an invite and um the plan hopefully as soon as we get it. So the idea would be that the consultant would present the the findings and of and recommendations within the plan. And that way, both both bodies who are going to have a lot of interest and overlap on. These programs and recommendations can weigh in and and we can answer any questions that come up at that point in time. After that, the consultant will make any kind of edits that come out of this. I don't think there'll be too many at this point because we've. Gone through quite a few with the committee at this point in time. And then ultimately there'll be an amendment to the P O C D to incorporate the plan into that and then whatever actions that council wants to take as well.
Will that be a hybrid meeting?
Yes, that's going to be all Zoom. I think it's going to be at seven PM on the thirtieth.
Oh, it'll be all Zoom, okay.
Yeah, all Zoom. Yeah, I don't think there's any reason to to have to get together for that in person. Um, and after that, we're working on a date for the training. The looks like uh we're going to split it between. Planning and zoning Z B A and conservation of those, both those should happen. And I think Z B A might be in like a week or two, then conservation. And so I'm trying to. Before I set a date, understand when you're going to do the um. Capital budget day, Tammy, so then I can work around. Trying not to overload you guys with everything in a one or week, two week span. So we'll we'll have an evening of training, which I think is probably better to do on a separate night than try to do on one of your meeting nights.
Okay.
Well, didn't.
We'll go ahead.
Oh, never mind. That West Cog thing in Wilton, that's just an optional thing. We don't need to attend.
Yeah, not required.
Okay.
Um, anything else, Steve?
No, unless you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, I have uh the questions I asked two weeks ago. Do we have answers about the Pearl and the Sono collection?
No, but I was able to find the approval for the Pearl, so I've had made some very small progress in the last. So no, I I my schedule is I had a couple of assignments that we're doing. It's lightened up quite a bit, so I can get that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Uh, any other?
Silver Mine Tavern again.
That's a good question. I had a uh meeting with their attorney Friday, so I I. It seems to just go in a perpetual circle.
Um, does anybody else have any other questions? Any other commissioners? Nope. Awesome. With that.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go.
I I just wanted to bring up a stone realty again. Um, it really is a very um interesting and for Norwalk anyway, a very innovative building. Uh, as I said, because um. Uh, it surpasses anything that we have in town uh regarding its um. Um, use of uh energy. It's also uh architecturally an interest. And uh what what I would say is instead of um. Um, having individual people make contact. Um, maybe do what we did when we visited the um W P C A. Um, and that is, you know, set up a um a meeting when we can go and visit it. I wouldn't be overly concerned about whether we have too many people and it becomes a meeting because we'll simply agree not to discuss any business. We're there to tour the building.
Great idea.
I'll have my hat, I'll wear it.
That's fine. Brian, can I leave that with you to reach out to Liz and see what's the best way to coordinate that?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, just a quick question. We we approved a residence on um. It's on East Avenue on on Mill Pond. That I thought was one hundred percent like sustainable or. Guys, remember that one? I've seen, I walked by while he's building it.
Oh, I know that.
Remember that?
Know that.
Is that like a similar, is that the same thing as this? I wasn't aware of this building.
It's 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 um, it's much larger.
Okay.
And it uses um many more uh different forms of passive energy.
Cool.
Yeah, it's I forgot the plot, but they went for one of the, I don't know if it was a lead platinum. I can't have to go back and look. It was. We we have that on our website somewhere, but it's was one of the, I think it was the greenest building in the state when it was built.
It's a business, Anna, and if you're driving up the connector. You can see it. It's unusual looking. Before you see the curb buildings, it's on your right.
Okay.
And they're a flooring company, if I'm not wrong, right? They sell.
That's right.
Yeah, there's a flooring.
They have two.
They have waterfalls. It's. It's really quite something.
With that.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Lou. Do a second favor. You can do this with a show of hands. Thank you all, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.